I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Basine?
Here.
Gabriel?
Present.
Jordan?
Here.
Martin?
Present.
Rousen?
Here.
Clanton?
Present. Do I have a motion to enter executive closed session?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we move into closed session.
All right, Doerher, second?
Second.
So we're moving and properly seconding that we enter into executive closed session. And Madam Clerk, will you please read the resolution?
Yes. Move that members of the school board go into a closed session for the purposes which are set out in subsection A of section 2.2-3711 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended for discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of the school board of the city of Norfolk pursuant to subsection 2.2-3711A1 of the Act. The subjects of this portion of the session are the personnel on today's regular personnel agenda, the continuing annual evaluation of the division superintendent required by Virginia Code Sections 22.1-60.1 and 22.1-53.13:5, and the continued renegotiation of the superintendent's contract pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 22.1-60 and 2.2-3711A and 29. Discussion or consideration of disciplinary and any other matters concerning students in Norfolk Public Schools that would involve the disclosure of information contained in the scholastic record pursuant to subsections 2.2-3711A2 of the Act. The subject of this portion of the session is discussion of specific students on today's regular student-supported agenda. And then consultation with legal counsel and briefing by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where discussion in open session would adversely affect the school board's negotiating or litigating posture, and consultation with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by the counsel pursuant to subsections 2.2-3711A7 and 8 of the Act. The subjects of this portion of the session are those set out above in subsections A and B of this motion, and to the extent consultation with legal counsel is needed.
All right, thank you. College, you've heard the resolution. Is there any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Okay. Basine?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Rousen?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye. We stand in recess, and we're entering a closed session. All right, we're going to have to call this. Well, we've got to come out of closed session first. Do I have a motion to come out of executive closed session?
I move to come out of executive closed session.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. Doerher, second?
I second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we come out of executive closed session. Madam Clerk, will you please read the resolution?
Yes. A resolution certified in an executive meeting of the school board of the city of Norfolk in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, whereas the school board of the city of Norfolk has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board of the city of Norfolk that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be resolved that the school board of the city of Norfolk hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the executive meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the executive meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the school board of the city of Norfolk.
Is there any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, the roll.
Basine?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Rousen?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye. All right, Madam Clerk, I'd like you to take it from here.
Yes, we are happy to have two special guests with us here today, our new school board student representatives. And right now, I want to ask the school board members to go and stand at the step and repeat, and I need Nia Muir and Jordan Wicker to join me at the podium. And Dr. Burson, you as well.
Did you say the step and repeat?
Yes. Step and repeat.
What's it called again?
Step and repeat.
Step and repeat.
You have a different terminology. You're welcome to use that. All right, everybody get in place. Good evening, ladies.
Good evening.
But first of all, before we get started, to kind of cut some of the attention, give these ladies a round of applause. We are excited to have you here with us. And so with this oath we're going to do, I'm going to start with you, Ms. Muir, and then after that, I'll do you, Ms. Wicker. You both stay here, and then afterwards, you'll greet the board members, starting with Mr. Jordan and down the line, and then we're going to take some ceremonial pictures, okay? All right. So raise your right hand. And repeat after me. I do solemnly swear or affirm
I do solemnly swear or affirm
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia
and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia
and that I will faithfully
and that I will faithfully
and impartially discharge
and impartially discharge
and perform all duties
and perform all the duties
incumbent upon me
incumbent upon me
as the student representative of the school board
as the student representative of the school board
of the city of Norfolk
of the city of Norfolk
for a term beginning
for a term beginning
September 21st, 2022
September 21st, 2022
and expiring June 16th, 2023
and expiring June 16th, 2023
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability
so help me God
so help me God.
Congratulations. Dr. Burson, I need you to sign, too. I do solemnly swear or affirm
I do solemnly swear or affirm
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
that I will support the Constitution
and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia
and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia
and that I will faithfully
and I will faithfully
and impartially discharge
and impartially discharge
and perform all duties
and perform all duties
incumbent upon me
incumbent upon me
as the alternate student representative
as the alternate student representative
of the school board of the city of Norfolk
of the school board of the city of Norfolk
for a term beginning September 21st, 2022
for a term beginning September 21st, 2022
and expiring June 16th, 2023
and expiring June 16th, 2023
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability
so help me God
so help me God.
Congratulations. A ceremonial copies for you and then a copies for me on record. Let's give them another round of applause. Now, ladies, here you go, Jordan. And you all can start greeting the board members. We're going to get a picture with the two of you in the middle of the board members together. Thank you.
Hello? Can you hear me, Lauren? Mrs. Campson?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
We're going to go ahead and turn things over to Attorney Cloud.
Ms. Campson has notified the chair previously that she needs to participate in today's meeting electronically because of a medical condition, so I need to ask her a couple of questions to establish within minutes certain things required by the school board's policy on this, which is BDD and by the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Ms. Campson, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Ms. Campson, my understanding is that you're requesting to participate today electronically because of a medical condition. Is that correct?
Yes.
And could you give us a general description of where you're participating from?
I am in a hotel room in Durham, North Carolina.
All right, thank you. With that, I will turn it over to the board clerk, Ms. Tanner, to call a roll call vote on whether to allow Ms. Campson to participate in today's meeting electronically.
Aye.
Gabriel?
Yes, aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Rousen?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye. All right.
So the vote is unanimous, and Ms. Campson can now participate through electronic communication means.
All right, great, thank you. And Ms. Campson, if you want to speak, just say, "Mr. Chair," so that I can pause for you, okay?
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the school board meeting for September. We're back at a new school year, and everything has been quite well so far, and we're going to continue that excitement for the new year. We're glad to have you all here with us this evening. We will see lots of faces of our new administrators around the room and as well as teaching staff, so we're glad to have you all here with us this evening, and we'll be recognizing you a little later. So moving on with the agenda, we have the adoption of the business meeting agenda, item 404. Do I have a motion for adoption of the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Doerher, second?
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and properly seconded that we adopt the business meeting agenda. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Jordan.
I had requested that one of the policies be added to the discussion agenda. I just wanted to know if that occurred.
Mr. Jordan, you actually, you made two requests in there. Either if it wasn't, if we weren't going to bring it for discussion in October, that it'd be added to the decision discussion. It is indeed going to be added to the October, so that's why it's not on the decision discussion for today. And that's policy B, CCD.
So it's pulled from the consent.
B, say it again?
Okay.
B, DDC.
It's pulled from the consent.
It's pulled from consent.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yep. That's why you don't see it in the decision discussion.
I couldn't.
No, it's okay.
It wasn't clear.
Got it. Anything else? All right, we'll go ahead and proceed with the roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Basine?
Aye.
Campson?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Rousen?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye. Okay, great. We're going to go ahead and do the Pledge of Allegiance, and this will be the first official act of our new student representative, Ms. Nia Muir. Muir, right?
Muir.
Okay, got it. If you want to, please stand.
Please rise and remain standing for the reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
We're now under item 4.06, School Board Clerk's report. Ms. Tanner?
The clerk's report notes the following observances for September. We have a proclamation for Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month as September 4th, it was September 4th to the 10th, was National Suicide Prevention Week, which both observances serve as opportunities to educate, promote, and give attention to resources and awareness around the issue of suicide prevention. We also recognize Attendance Awareness Month, opioid awareness month, and National Hispanic Heritage Month, and that was Thursday, September 15th through Saturday, October 15th. And the moment that we've all been waiting for, my smiling faces of our administrators here, it is time to recognize our new administrators for 2022, 2023. I'd ask the board members to come to the front of the dais in the center part to greet our new administrators. And Dr. Burson. And I'm going to call you all by alphabetical order. So when your name is called, please come forward. If you're starting from, if you're on that side of the room, just make your way to Dr. Burson first. So everyone start with Dr. Burson. All right. The first person we have is Darvin Alexander, Assistant Principal at Norview Middle School. Boonvasevich. Thank you, Boonvasevich. Assistant Principal, High School at Norview High School. Next, we have Robert Dickerson, Employee Relations and Investigations Administrator in Human Resources. Katina Dunbar, Assistant Principal at Bayview Elementary School. We have Dwight Durin, Director of Budget and Grants Management in the Budget Office. Leon Edwards, Senior Coordinator, Instructional Technology and Virtual Learning. Next, we have Kimberly Elforsey. Is that correct? Okay, great. Lead School Nurse in Student Wellness. Next, we have Tracy Flemings, Principal of Roughner Academy. Next, we have Doron Ford, Principal of Bogertie Washington High School. Next, we have Denise Green, Principal of Granby Elementary School. Next, we have Nicole Gregory, Principal at CHKD. Amy Griffin, Lead School Nurse with Student Wellness. Tori Jacobs-Sumry, Principal of Norview High School. Michelle Jones, District Supervisor in School Nutrition. Jason Coontz, Assistant Principal, Ocean Air Elementary. Michelle Lawrence, Human Resource Generalist in Human Resources. Lisa Nash, Senior Coordinator, English Elementary and Curriculum Instruction. Donna Smith, Assistant Principal at Norview High School. Enjoy the moment. Doctor, okay. Doctor Donna Smith. And Donna Smith-Sunderland? Sanderlin? Donna Smith-Sanderlin, Coleman Place Elementary, Assistant Principal. Camara Kamara Williams, Network Engineer III in Information Technology. Is that correct? Don Williams, Assistant Principal at Lake Taylor High School. And last but not least, Richard Bond, Mobile Device Systems Engineer, Information Technology. And just in case if you did not check in and check your names off, is there any other administrators that we did not call?
Two more.
Okay, Cecil Avery, Site Coordinator, NTC Evening School. Tanya Harvey, Senior Coordinator, Career and Technical Education. Lisa Devery, Senior Director of Accounting. David King, Network Engineer III, Systems Information Technology. And Bernie, Lead School Social Worker. Heather Medina, Buyer Contract Manager. And Sherri Chapman, Senior Director in Purchases and Supply. And we have Cynthia Nowicki. Ah! Lead School Psychologist, Student Wellness. Do we have anyone else? We do not want to leave anyone off the list. Awesome. Let's give these new administrators a round of applause. Thank you very much.
All right, and again, congratulations to those who received promotions, and welcome to all of those who are joining the MPS family. So now we're at the superintendent's report. Dr. Burson?
Good evening. I just want to share with you that we have had a tremendous opening of the school year. Our classroom teachers have done such a tremendous job. I want to thank them, as well as our building principals, our executive directors of schools, and all of Cav for what you did to make our opening a success. And this evening, we have a video to share with you that highlights some of the wonderful things that are going on in Norfolk Public Schools at the beginning of the school year. So please roll the video.
Norfolk Public Schools welcomed back nearly 29,000 students from summer break just after Labor Day. While it was a fresh start for our students, it was also a beginning for three principals who were enjoying their very first opening day of school in their new buildings.
There's so many thoughts that I have just running through my head, and I'm so excited. You know, this is the first time that students actually get to come back into the building without face masks, without having to be six feet apart, and I'm really looking forward to students being able to build those relationships and make those magical moments and those magical memories that they didn't have the opportunity to make before.
We had a great start of the day with our BTW alumni and along with the Norfolk City University, SGA. Well, one thing I'm looking forward to are a couple of things, but one in particular is just really getting to know the students and the community, and just looking to bring just some renewed energy as students come back to school, and just looking to, you know, get off to a great start.
Everything is going well so far. I'm excited to be here. We have a great team and staff here, the assistant principals, as well as the main office staff. We were able to assist our families. Our counselors were ensuring that students are getting enrolled today, so everything is going well. My expectations, everyone is meeting the expectations, so we're off to a good start.
That good start included visits from school board members, administrators, and of course, the superintendent, who were all very pleased with what they saw on the first day, and were enthusiastic about the start of a new school year.
Well, you know, I'm a lifelong educator, a teacher, a principal, and I can't stay away. Our parents were so wonderful, the way they brought their kids in, they all knew to have their IDs, and what we wanted them to do. So many of them were coming and bringing supplies for the classrooms. It's just, it's a wonderful start here at Larry Moore Elementary.
Things are going well. There's so much excitement and energy, students and the teachers, everybody's ready to be back so that we can have an awesome school year. I'm looking for a year that our students can feel safe, that they can come in, they can feel that they're learning, that our community can see that we're making progress. We're not there at the goal yet, but with everyone's support and everyone coming together, we can make this thing happen.
Everything is looking absolutely amazing. The energy is so high, the teachers are so positive, and the children are just precious. I'm looking forward to a wonderful, very strong academic year, and certainly, safety and security is always paramount, so we're just looking forward to a great year. We made such great strides last year. We're going to continue with that. We have a strong strategic plan that has been developed and to continue with that. We have a strong strategic plan that has been developed and so putting that into action, that's what I'm looking forward to.
Easton Preschool Teachers and Staff Members spent time in mid-August moving into their new accommodations at the former Fairlawn Elementary. As work continued to be done to update the building for preschoolers with exceptional needs, teachers unpacked piles of boxes and got their classrooms ready for the upcoming school year.
It's been busy. The teachers are here today for the first time, setting up their classrooms, beginning that work. Still a work in progress, but we're definitely getting there and it's all starting to come together. One of the coolest features, I think, of the new building is that we do have a wheelchair lift to get students off and on of the stage and the cafeteria, cafeteria for our student performances. So we've never had that capability before.
It's been exciting moving to a new building. I was at the old school for about 12 years prior to moving to here. So change was definitely needed. However, it's a little bit difficult moving into a new space and setting up. As you can see, the room is different, the layout is different. But again, it's exciting to make that change and make a difference in the kids' lives in a new setting.
I love Easton, I guess wherever it goes. However, I'm excited about a new beginning, a new community, new kids that will be coming for early childhood experiences. So I'm looking forward to all that being in our new location will bring to us and the children.
Rising sixth and ninth grade students in Norfolk Public Schools got a head start on middle and high school by taking part in transition programs over the summer.
Cafeteria is right here and chorus room is down that direction.
We are so very excited to have our new pilots on board. So they have about a month head start on other students who did not attend.
About to enter is the gym, which we call the Booker Dome, and it's where we have our basketball game.
These two-day programs were designed to help students get acclimated to their new schools and schedules, and there was even an opportunity for them to have a little fun.
Right now, we're on a scavenger hunt tour. So the kids are playing a bingo game as we go and check out the whole building.
And then we also have a science station today where they're building spaghetti towers for some hands-on experiments. And they're also in the gym, they're doing Hungry Hungry Hippo, which is a big winner.
This transition program gave not only students the chance to get used to a new environment, it also enabled new staff members to experience what school will be like in the fall.
It's so ironic that we both are starting new, with me being new to Booker T. Washington. However, I share with the students that we both know what success takes and the journey to 2026 starts today.
A group of rising third, fourth, and fifth graders had a chance to learn about a variety of foods and how foods can impact their overall health.
We've been doing a summer kids' cooking camp for the kids in Ingleside to try to help educate them and give them good information about not only cooking food, nutrition, where their food comes from. We've had educational programs every day as well as different guest chefs who have come in every day.
The Department of School Nutrition and the Newbie Foundation partnered with Feast Virginia through a grant from Zentara Cares to put on this three-week camp. Children learned how to use different kitchen tools, how to read labels, and more through plenty of hands-on activities.
I learned how to cut moss stains. I learned how to make pizza. I learned how to make a quesadilla. I learned how to make a fukkabob. I learned how to cut peppers. I learned how to cut a pineapple and a lot more stuff.
Plenty of companies around the area volunteered their time and talents to make this camp work. This was just another example of why community involvement is so important.
Community is like the heart of just making our children become wonderful individuals and exposing them to different professions and opportunities. And it is so very important to have them come in and volunteer because not only does it show that they support the teachers and what they're doing, but they're actually helping to educate our children and to expose them to different things that they probably would not ever be exposed to if it wasn't for them.
It's that time of year again when Norfolk Public Schools welcomed its new employees into the fold. New Teacher Institute was held at Lake Taylor High School to help new hires made up mostly of teachers get acclimated to their new responsibilities and duties as district employees.
Today, we were excited to welcome 300-plus new teachers to our district. We welcomed them in the auditorium all together. And then we have a wonderful vendor fair where our community partners come out and make sure that they too show their support of the new hires in Norfolk Public Schools. And then from there, they'll rotate into their content sessions where they'll meet the specialists that oversees their area in Norfolk, and they'll receive curriculum updates, best practices, a technology toolbox, some instructional strategies, just to support them in their journey.
So we're excitingly welcoming all the new staff to Norfolk Public Schools. Today, we have, I think approximately 300 folks who are new to the division, several veteran teachers and several new teachers. And I've actually spoken to quite a few teachers who are returning to Norfolk Public Schools and excited to be back home. Our goal for New Teacher Institute is for the teachers to have an opportunity to meet their curriculum coordinators or specialists, to learn about our benefits and human resources, but overall, just to acquaint them with Norfolk Public Schools and all the supports that are in place for them.
Principals and Assistant Principals from every school in the district were invited to attend a Special Operations Day learning tour over the summer. This excursion included visits to school plant, school nutrition, and transportation. At each stop, supervisors and teams from all three departments took these school administrators on tours of their facilities and answered their questions.
We're going to explain all that we do and who supervises each aspect of what we do. By the end of the day, we certainly hope that they know who to contact and how to contact them so we can respond to their schools. We want their schools to be warm, safe, cool, and dry, and that's our mission.
I think it's great for administrative positions to see the bones of the operations, to see we are how their students get to and from school. It was very refreshing to have such a welcoming group and to be so inquisitive about what we do here at Transportation.
This is very great because it gives us a vision into some of the areas we just don't see. We only see one part of it, but this gives us sort of the background. And I've been in two other school divisions and never saw this happen. So this definitely needs to happen in every school division and with every principal. They should come out and see this, every principal and assistant principal.
And before closing out, Chairman Clanton, I would certainly be remiss if I didn't recognize the very first people that see our children in the morning and the very last people that see our children before they drop them off, and that's our bus drivers. They have done an absolutely amazing job. And so I'd like to thank Rick Fraley for his leadership in operations and Ashley Fussell, our new Transportation Director, for a job well done. Let's keep that momentum going, and I'd like to give them a round of applause.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Birdsong. Lots of great things happening in Norfolk Public Schools. Our next item that we have on the agenda is Citizen Comments, Agenda Items Only.
Yes, Chairman Clanton, for tonight's Citizens Comments on Agenda Items Only, we have three speakers. Today's speakers have signed up for public comments before the start of today's business meeting. If you would like to provide public comments for Agenda Items Only, you are required to state the agenda items you are addressing prior to providing your public comments at this meeting. When your name is called, please come forward to the speaker's podium, state your name and whether you have a child in Norfolk Public Schools, or if you are employed by the district, and state your agenda item. One person is to speak at a time. If you are requesting a group, if you're representing a group, excuse me, state the group's name. You may ask your group members to stand in place to be recognized. Speaking time is limited to three minutes. A timer is set with an alarm that will signify the end of your speaking time. State your position and give facts and irrelevant data. Avoid saying anything that identifies students or personnel information about individual employees. Personnel, disciplinary, and confidential matters may be addressed to the school board directly via email at schoolboard@npsk12.com. Comments should be addressed to the board and not addressed to an individual member. School board members do not respond to public comments at the time they are given, and any written statements or supporting materials should be given to the clerk. Chairman Clanton, our first speaker for today for Agenda Items Only is Barrett Hicks, followed by Vicky Greco.
Good evening, Board. Barrett Hicks, Executive Director for the Concerned Citizens Association, Titlewood Connection, and Did It Before Business Group. I stand before you tonight in reference to Agenda Items. I shared on my thing that is several different Agenda Items, so I'm not sure how this process works. Do I do all of them, or do I do one of the, or how does that work?
You have Bills and Payroll Report, Monthly Financial Report, Use of Facilities Report, Citizen Comment, and Five-Year Plan. And you say you did it by Business Group?
Did it before Business Group. That's my organization. So I'm saying, do I identify, address?
You just identified. Now you may speak.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I'll start with the Facilities Report. This summer, Did It Before Business Group partnered with We Will and the Concerned Citizens Association on September the 4th, which as you said earlier, I think, was the national awareness towards mental health and all that good stuff. So my problem with the process was that we were told initially that it would cost us over $1,000 when we, the We Will Organizations was providing over 500 haircuts to the youth of the community, as well as our organization came forward to not share knowledge. We have got to embrace these organizations as you say that you want us there and you want our support. So we've got to look at these processes. I mean, it can't be that you allow one organization to pay $25, another one to pay $1,000, and another one to pay zero. Ultimately, it appears that, and I'm not sure whether we got a bill for whatever, but it appears that Norfolk Public Schools took on most of the costs. I just don't like the process of when you don't have it right to where we have to wonder, or that it's not providing that what everyone will pay, and I don't care who that is. Again, I've come to many meetings and I share that I just look for an even playing field. If I have an even playing field, we win. Our communities win. So again, I just would ask that you guys take a look at the process that is in place and ensure that no matter the organization, that we all treat it fair and equitable across the board. That's what we ask. So I'll leave it at just on that one because I take it that I was supposed to address each of these within this three-minute period, or was I able to come back for each one of them? Because again, I don't understand the process.
You get three minutes to speak about, not each item, you get three minutes as an individual in the community.
Again, if they're separate, and I'm gonna leave this, but if they're separate Agenda Items, I would think that an individual that's speaking to the Agenda Items will have the three minutes to address each of the items, but I think we need to take a look at that.
So in reference to that, Mr. Hicks, there are many different ways to provide comments to the board, including email, which I think that you have sent an email to the board about a relevant item. So we encourage the community to utilize all the tools available to them to provide comments to the board, but we'll take that into consideration and continue to talk about it.
Sure, but if a person wants to come, as I love to come and speak to the items, I think we need to have a process that says, again, we have five different items, so that individual should have.
Point taken, Mr. Hicks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clark?
Vicky Greco, followed by Rakita Robinson.
Hi, I'll address the proposed five-year strategic plan, School Division. Good evening. First, to our school board student representatives, Ms. Mear and Ms. Wicker. My thanks and congratulations. Good evening to members of our MPS Governance Team, the elected representatives of our school board, and our Superintendent, Dr. Birdsong. Good evening, fellow stakeholders. My name is Vicky Manugo-Greco. I'm always grateful to let others know that I'm a 1985 Lake Taylor graduate and that my husband and I are thankful parents of an 11th grader and two MPS Mori graduates of the classes of 2019 and 2020. Since I graduated many, many moons ago, it's safe to say a lot of school terminology has changed. What I used to call essay questions back in the day, my kids referred to as free-response questions or FRQs, which Wikipedia simply explains as the type of open-ended questions commonly used in schools to test students' learning and mastery of content. Tonight, I must share two of my own FRQs relating to my very grave concerns about the practice by members of the school board who seem to prefer political expediency over good governance. I'm well aware that the board does not respond to the public statements made by the school community. However, I will ask them as part of my citizen comments. After watching a number of recent governance training sessions, I've learned the crew team metaphor has been used to explain that the school board steers the boat and the superintendent, leadership team, and staff do the actual rowing. Please explain why the Division's five-year strategic plan to be voted on tonight seems to be lacking the board's established, clear expectations in terms of specific growth measures, which reinforce the board's own accountability plan and objectives, their vision for success for our students, staff, and schools, the sound steering and oversight that directs all the hard rowing on behalf of our children. My second FRQ. This long-term, five-year strategic plan that was set to be introduced by the administration to the MPS community in a media blitz this summer did not, at the time of that board presentation, include specific goals with measurable, achievable, results-oriented, and time-specific objectives attached, but was very visually appealing. It was a great report. Please explain if the critical accountability components that will measure long-term whether MPS succeeds or fails in meeting academic and social-emotional learning needs of each and every MPS student are now included in the strategic plan the board will vote to adopt tonight. As a steering committee member of the grassroots public education advocacy group, Norfolk Gains, growing and investing in Norfolk schools, I joined with other public education faithful in Norfolk about 10 years ago to help raise constituency awareness of foster stakeholder commitment to and call out for city investments of needed financial and human resources for our public schools. I also was invited to take part in the strategic planning process two school administrations ago and joined several other folks who sit on the dais tonight in that process. The plan nor the top school divisions at the time who were also new to Norfolk were definitely not perfect. However, we've come a long way and have climbed seriously steep hills since that long-ago strategic plan was developed by community stakeholders working closely alongside with internal school stakeholders. I know we're all doing the best we can, but like a recent conversation with my 11th grader, who said, "It's not enough just to say we're doing the best you can at the time." I can do better. Thank you.
Rakita Robinson?
Good evening, school board members, Dr. Birdsong, and welcome to a brand-new school year. As we began our school years, teachers take immense pride in starting the school year off on the right foot. We returned refreshed with a new vision and eager to meet our students and watch them grow in knowledge. I want to bring your attention to the MPS curriculum document passed out to you. This is a curriculum created by MPS and designed specifically for students attending Norfolk Public Schools. I've heard that great time and reflection was spent on this curriculum. The expectation would be that if followed and presented to all first graders, every standard would be covered, and my ad lib would be that students would have a rewarding, thriving school year. As I began to present this curriculum to my students, by day five, I was already discouraged with the simplest of challenges. Please see the highlight on page 36 of the document. The curriculum states that the teacher will take the students on a walking field trip to the school's flagpole. Now, while this may not present a problem to many schools in Norfolk, it presented a problem at Richard Bowling Elementary School. Imagine me walking out to the front of the school with 18, 16, six-year-olds eager to see what their STEM activity for the day involved, only to be met with an empty flagpole, and to learn that this has been the case since last year too. There really is no Plan B for this STEM activity. It's designed to show respect for the United States flag.
It's designed to show respect for the United States flag. How can they contrast the Virginia flag to the U.S. flag, which is, which one flies higher? Why do you think the U.S. flag flies higher? Can I even demonstrate how to, a simple machine, how a pulley works? So I'm here today to ask you, NPS board members, how many NPS schools operate daily without flags on their flagpole? Is Richard Bowling the only school without flags? Isn't every school worthy of having an American flag? I'm asking you, our NPS school board members, for our flags. I ask that when our community stakeholders drive up on November 8th to their polling location, that they're not met with an empty flagpole. They will be casting a vote for you. Show them that they can have every confidence in you to make sure our students at Richard Bowling know they are worthy of all the resources to the schools, even on the west side of town. Thank you.
Chairman Clanton, this concludes our speakers.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clark. We are now moving toward the approval of the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion for the approval?
Can I ask you something, Mrs. Clanton? I'm sorry.
You are not.
I don't mean to disrupt, but I just want to make sure. Will there be a time for non-agenda items as well?
Yes, sir. It's posted on the agenda. I think it's also posted outside.
On the agenda, it's posted outside as well.
So, Mr. Hicks, you can go right outside here and look at it. Mr. Hicks, you're in the, you're any, Mr. Hicks. Mr. Hicks, you are not recognized.
Thank you, sir.
Please have a seat. Thank you. Madam Clark, I'm asking for a motion on the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the consent agenda.
Do I hear a second?
I second.
It is a move and properly seconded that we approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Chair, hear none. Madam Clark, please call the roll.
Bassin?
Aye.
Hampson?
Aye.
Thank you. Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Rousen?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye. The consent agenda stands approved. I'm gonna take a point of personal privilege here. This is the school board's governance business meeting. We should have, we should act accordingly with respect for the students who are present in this room, for those who are watching this meeting. We provide opportunities for the public to participate, agenda items and non-agenda items. Those are specifically placed on this agenda. Please adhere to those things. I don't have to sit anybody down, but it's incumbent upon us as the individuals sitting at this dais here, and myself particularly in this seat as the chair, to make sure that we do things decent and in order. And I'm going to do that. Now, moving on to the next item on the agenda. We have a separate item on the approval of the minutes for August. No, that was in the consent agenda. The monthly financial report. Mr. Jenkins.
Yes, good morning, or good afternoon, excuse me, Chairman Clanton, Vice Chair Dr. Gabriel, Dr. Birdsong, and members of the board. Tonight, we'll speak, we'll talk a little bit about the financial report for the month of August. I think, I see Ms. Tanner has that on the screen now. The August report covers two months for the fiscal year that started July 1st. As with previous financial reports, this report provides, reflects transactions applicable to August and recorded on and before September 12th. General fund collections for the first two months totaled $40.6 million. This is just a little over 10 point, well, it's 10.6% of our $383 million budget. Collections during the same period in the previous two years ranged between 10.6% and 13.7%, so similar. On page three of the highlights, we provide a graph of revenue and spending for the current, for the current year. By the end of August, we had spent $23.5 million, or 6.1% of our budget, and again, revenue was $40.6 million. During the previous two years, spending at that same point in time ranged between 4.4% and 7.6% of our budget. So spending this year is slightly ahead of the previous two years. Page four provides two graphs, one for revenue and one for spending for the current and two previous years. The monthly budget trend appears in the green background. Note, revenue collections are greater than the trend for this first two months, while spending is closer to the trend. More detailed information is available, starting on page five of the report. There is also a report for the month of July, but in interest of time, I will skip that unless you have questions. With the one exception, there was a budget transfer during the month of July. The transfer was for, it appears on page 16 of the July report. It was for $140,000, and it recorded transfers for the facilities department in order to purchase repairs, materials for repairing heating and cooling systems. Chairman Clanton, that concludes my comments. If you have individual questions, I'll be happy to try to answer.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Any questions? Mr. Jordan?
Yes, thank you. On, thank you, Mr. Jenkins. On page five, we have revenue in excess of expenditures and encumbrances. Does that equate to the estimated carryforward?
Oh, no, sir. The carryforward, carryforward funds are not appropriated in here. They are actually in the capital section. I think, with the exception of two and a, there's two and a half million that we did put in operations, and that would be included here, but it's not reflected in receipts. That has not been, that entry hasn't been booked, but it's showing in the revenue, about two and a half million dollars. And on page five, on revenue, the, under city funding, that last line, 510, 507, city additional appropriation was the amount that was carried over from prior years.
I'm sorry, can you say the last part again, please? I'm trying to follow you.
Page five of the August report, under city funding, the fourth item is the carryover, 2.55 million.
So it, just so I make sure I'm following, so at one point, we were projecting our carryforward would be one amount, then I know we did some expenditures, and you're saying as of right now, the amount that we're carrying forward is about?
Okay, there's, we haven't spent any of it. Two and a half million is in the operating budget, the general fund. The remainder of it is in the capital funds, which is for deferred, primarily for deferred maintenance. And this is only the general fund, so the capital fund is not presented here.
So the total amount of where you think we are right now in terms of?
For last year?
Mm-hmm.
Well, excuse me. The appropriation that was made from the reversion and the surplus, that was from fiscal 2021. I think I briefed you on the estimate for the reversion last month, or in the month of July. I don't have an update for that at this point.
Okay. And then for your, for your footnotes, where it speaks to spending is approximately $6.4 million lower than the same period last year, and then you note spending, lower spending in various items, what, what's the driver for that, especially around operations and maintenance down $6.7 million?
I would have to look into that, sir. I don't, I can't answer that. I would have to, I'd be happy to investigate, and I could send an email out explaining that.
Was it something that you were anticipating?
No. I mean, I can't, I can't tell you right off. I would have to look into that further, but we can do that.
All right. Thank you.
Be happy to.
Anyone else? Ms. Bassin?
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. I too would like that information, the last question around the spending, both for July and August. I had similar questions around that, around the lower spending. The other thing that with our legislative update that we received, it reminded me about, you know, our expenditures around students that utilize the Children's Services Act fund, or it used to be listed in our expenditure report as the Norfolk Interagency Consortium, but I don't, I believe that is not existing, it doesn't exist in that entity. Can you, do you know off the top, or?
I'm not real familiar with the CSA here. I am familiar with CSA, or the Comprehensive, well, what's now known as the Child Services Act. I believe we make contributions to the interagency, but the actual spending is not in, that is, that we, the spending for the interagency is not within our records.
Okay.
That is actually a city agency.
Right. But our contribution, just so you know why I'm asking, it used to be incorporated in our monthly financial reports, just, you know, and so I was just personally just looking specifically for that.
We can investigate the, what the payments to the interagency. I don't know that there have been, been some at this point. I think our contribution is small in relation to their total budget, but I can look into that.
Okay. Thank you. I'd appreciate it.
Anyone else? Just for clarity, Madam Clark, was this report posted on Friday? Okay.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the financial report as presented.
Is there a second?
I second.
It's moved, it's been moved and properly seconded that we adopt and accept the financial report subject to audit. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clark, please call the roll.
Bassin?
Aye.
Hampson?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Nay.
Martin?
Aye.
Rousen?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye. The monthly financial report is adopted, accepted. The next item that we have is the post-employment benefits, and this is a vote required. Mr. Jenkins?
Yes, sir. And I think Ms. Tanner's bringing that up. Thank you. Okay. I'm gonna talk to you a bit about post-employment benefits, and the specific ones we're talking about are healthcare benefits for retired individuals. The, we have a retiree, we have retiree participation in our health insurance program. The premiums are based on a single pool. The active employees and the retirees are in the same pool, so the premiums for retirees are identical to the, to those of active employees, at least as far as establishing the total employer and employee premium. Retirees may participate in the plan so long as they have at least 15 years of service. The, their benefits in the plan end once they become eligible for Medicare, which is usually age 65, but can be earlier. As I said, the premiums are based on a single pool, and the Norfolk Schools subsidy or stated subsidy is $75. So if, for instance, what we will find is that retiree premiums at the low end are about $628 a month. For an active individual, the total premium would be the sum of 75 and 628, so right around $700. For an active employee, the school board is going to contribute most of that cost. I think the employee shares only about $10. For a retiree, the organization, or the school board only pays $75 a month. The employee is responsible for the rest, and this is a longstanding practice that the school board has, and I think, and I'm sure there's a policy that deals with it. Currently, there are, well, excuse me, their premiums, retiree premiums are quite high. They range from $628 to $2,505. I will say practically all the retirees are paying around $600, $628 or a little higher because they only cover themselves. There are only four spouses and a handful of children on there that are in the retiree portion of their health insurance plan. Now, there is, we talked about the subsidy, I talked about the subsidy being $75 a month. There is also an implicit subsidy. This is a subsidy that is buried in the premium structure. Under the U.S. accounting rules, retirees receive an unstated or implicit subsidy since their claims far exceed the premiums that are produced. They're significantly greater than the, than the claims of an active employee. It's, and it's, it's a product of age. Unfortunately, as we age, we have more healthcare costs. I can speak to that maybe better than some of the others of you. Retiree claims, annual claims exceed their premiums by about $12,700. So under U.S. accounting rules, which we must follow, there is a subsidy for every retiree participating of about $12,700. Remind you, we tell them it's $75 a month, which equals $900. If you look at the premiums, that's what it looks like. We say premium is $700. We pay 75, and you pay 670, 625 or so. But because they're participating in the active pool where the claims are much lower, there is an implied subsidy, and the accounting rules require that we recognize this subsidy as a liability. In 2007, the school board capped the implicit subsidy at $7,200 per retiree to limit future liabilities. That's the fourth bullet, but you look at the bullet right above it, and it says air premium, or implicit premium, excuse me, the implicit premium is $12,700, which is much greater than, or implicit subsidy is much greater than the cap that was placed by the school board in 2007. So again, the U.S. government standards, in this case, it's a governmental accounting standards board, says other post-employment benefits must be disclosed, so they're disclosed in their financial reports and on the financial reports of the city of Norfolk. Liabilities for the benefits are based on the actual claims data for the retirees. As I said, there's a pooling of active and retired premiums, so the published premiums are all the same for everyone. But as is, is almost always the case, the active employees and their employer are subsidizing the retirees and older employees. The liability that we must recognize includes both active employees who are going to retire at some point in the future and the retired employees. So it's not just the liability for the retired employees, but also active people who will in the future retire. The rationale for doing that is that the proper accounting would require that you recognize the cost of retirement benefits while people are working. They are providing those services to us once they retire, so we have to recognize their future retirement cost during the period that they're employed. So that's kind of how it gets into our liabilities. So again, benefits are recognized while employees are working. So this is a graphic or a table of our premium structure. This is a sample employee that's on our POS, or Point of Service 1,000 plan, which I think means that there's a $1,000 deductible, something like that. But you can see the annual claims projected in a, in a single combined pool for an individual is $8,603. If the retirees were in a separate pool, their claims would be 21,303, and the premiums would be based on that. Our explicit subsidy is $900 a year, $75 a month. There's, again, the implicit subsidy which I spoke about. Under the single plan, it's hidden, you can't really see it, but in a separate pool, that implicit subsidy is. But you can see the annual claims projected in a, in a single combined pool for an individual is $8,603. If the retirees were in a separate pool, their claims would be 20, would be $21,303, and the premiums would be based on that. Our explicit subsidy is $900 a year, $75 a month. There's, again, the implicit subsidy which I spoke about. Under the single plan, it's hidden, you can't really see it, but in a separate pool, that implicit subsidy is currently $12,700. The retiree's share annually is $7,703, or $642 a month. So you can see the, the employees paying $642. We say we're paying 900, when in fact, we're paying $13,600 between the implicit subsidy and the, the actual stated subsidy. This chart gives you some feeling or idea of just what claims look like. It was taken out of actuary's report dated just earlier this month. You can see, we've got two columns, one for city and one for schools. Just ignore the cities. The numbers aren't terribly different. You can find their costs might be a little higher at the beginning, actually their costs are a little higher all the way through. For schools, a man aged 40 generally costs about $6,200 a year in, in claims, whereas a woman that's aged 40 costs about $11,231. You can see, especially on the male side, those numbers escalate as people get older. So that by the time an, a man reaches the age of 60, they're having claims of about $17,400, and a woman would have claims a little higher. And at age 64, you can see those two reverse. So you can see, and this is based on our actual claims data, as we age, or as our retire, our employees and retirees age, their health insurance claims go up. So this is, this is the basis of the actuarial analysis, analysis and determination of our Now, if there's a $7,200 cap, and again, in June, actual, June of 2070, excuse me, June of 2007, this board had indicated the cap is $7,200, and that we, we can't exceed that for the implicit subsidy. At that time, the implicit subsidy was about $3,600. So they set it about twice what it was at the time, and we have breached that. So if we were to stick to the, if we were to enforce the cap, you can see the current premium is $21,303. Again, there's the explicit subsidy that we're saying $75 a month, which equals $900 a year. The implicit subsidy is currently $12,700, and the retiree's share premiums is $7,703, or $642 a month. If the cap were put into place, the employees, the retiree's share would be $13,203, or $1,100 a month. So every, every retiree would get an increase in their healthcare premiums starting December of $460. And that's kind of where we are. So, the impact of enforcing the $7,200 cap, and I apologize upfront because there's some numbers that got transposed, but if we were to enforce it, retirees would see a $458 increase in their premiums each month. About 107 of that is related to healthcare inflation for the previous year, and the remainder is the, the capping of the implicit subsidy. In previous years, actuaries have used the subsidy cap to limit the estimated OPEB liability. In other words, they presented a smaller liability. We have presented that in their financial reports, as has the city, but they came to us about six weeks ago and said, hey, we can't enforce, you're not enforcing this cap, so we can no longer, we can no longer use that to limit your liabilities. So without the cap, our OPEB liability increased by about $6.3 million. The total liability, I believe, is about $65 million, but it increased by 6.3. So eliminate, eliminating the cap, which 7,200, but the real subsidy is much greater, it would increase our long-term liabilities and the City of Norfolk's long-term, term liabilities by about 1/4 of 1%. So 1/4, not 24%, but 1/4 of 1%. So that's a fair, it's a very small amount in relation to the total debt. The credit rating or the ability of the city to, to borrow would not really be impacted, just a very minimal impact. However, if we enforce the cap, the $7,200 cap, there would be a huge impact on their air retirees or former employees. Their premiums would nearly double in January. Our recommendation to you is to remove the cap on the implicit subsidy for retirees participating in our health insurance plan. The cap was adopted in 2007. It has never been revised, and I would say that the reason it hasn't been enforced is because it, it was put there 15 years ago, and no one, but the actuaries were aware that it even existed. So our recommendation is to proceed as we have been, and that is ignore the cap, or we, we ask that you remove it since the board had put it in place. If there are questions, I'll be happy to try to answer.
Mr. Jenkins, before we get to the discussion on it, so we have a recommendation from the administration to remove the $7,200 cap on the implicit subsidy for retirees participating in the health insurance plan. The cap was adopted by the school board June 20th of 2007. Do I hear a motion for adoption?
I move that we adopt the recommendation brought to us by Dr. Birdsong and Mr. Jenkins.
Wait, do I hear a second?
I second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Clanton?
Ms. Bassin?
I, I just want to be sure that I'm understanding this correctly. So, so we, although this has been, this was adopted by the board in 20, in 2007, if I'm hearing you correctly, our practice though has been different, which has been that we haven't actually applied this cap.
That is correct, yes.
So we're, we're essentially aligning our, our policy with our practice?
Absolutely.
Is what you're asking us to do? Okay. I just want to be sure I understand.
Yeah, you're absolutely correct. Thank you.
Okay.
Question? Yes, Mr. Jordan?
The, the policy that had the cap, how was that articulated? Is it in the policy? Is it in the vote? What is it?
First, it is not a policy. There is nothing in the policy that even mentions this cap. It was an action of the school board. A motion was made, and it was approved, but it is not reflected in the policies.
And so, but you don't, you don't have a copy of what the motion was? It was just cap it forever?
Yes, actually, I do have.
Oh, okay.
I didn't, it wasn't included in your package, but we do have that, yes.
So it just simply was to have the cap and?
The, the rationale for the cap was to limit the future OPEB liability on the, on the books and records of the City of Norfolk and the school board.
So how long was it enforced?
I would estimate that we breached the cap at least five years ago.
So we, so we're not really adjusting a policy. We are adopting a new position that, that ends or overrides the, the action of the board that was taken June 30.
We're asking you to revoke the previous, the previous action.
So we're really revoking or, or overriding?
Yes, sir.
And, and then, is there any, in, in doing so, I'm just trying to understand it all, because just trying to follow it. We then just remove it, and does it ever get revisited again? I mean, what, what happens from, how do, how do we learn from what was done before? What do we, what should we be considering going forward? Should we take this option in terms of if something requires us to revisit it? Where, where does that fit?
If the school board isn't, is interested in a cap, I would, I would very much suggest that it be reflected in the policies of the school board, and not simply in action, especially one, when this was adopted in 2007, the estimate was we would breach the cap in about 10 years, and 10 years would have been around 2017, or about five years ago. However, apparently, no one was aware of it, or they took no action to address it. So I, I mean, it would suggest that if you're interested in, in a cap, then that it, that such an item be placed in the, be addressed through the policies.
Yeah, I don't, I don't really know, I'm asking because I don't know if there's pros, if there's a pro and con about first, you know, removing the cap versus increasing the cap, and if there's a, if there should be a policy based upon your recommendation that I want us to put a policy in place.
One of the reasons that we strongly recommend that you remove the cap is because the, the, the understanding of employees who are receiving this benefit is that they will be able to participate in the retiree, in the, in the employee's health insurance plan, once they've left, if they had the requisite years of experience. There's really no mention of what the cap is. It's generally, you may continue to participate. Practically, all of the costs will be on your, at your own, will be, you would have to pay for those costs, and the understanding is that there's a single pool. There's not a pool for retirees and a pool for the active employees. Everybody's in a single pool. That historically is how retirees have been treated, and they're, they're understanding, they understand that they, they no longer get the very large subsidy that an active employee gets, and that the school board's contribution is $75 a month, but that they are permitted to participate in our plan. So if, if we were to place a cap, I think we would need to explain that to our employees so that they understand that the benefits, that the cost of those benefits are substantially different.
And I have one, one other question. Is there something significant about taking this action today in September?
Yes, I mean, I know that I have, there, there is. A school board has placed a $7,200 cap. That means when the premiums come, when the new election comes up in December, we will need to increase premiums for the retirees in accordance with this cap unless you remove it.
I understand that. I didn't know if there is something that says we need to do it in September versus do it at the August business, October business.
Sir, I'd say the earlier the better, because we're moving into the renewal period for the health insurance. The, the period begins January 1st, but I believe the premiums are paid a month, I know for actives, they're paid a month earlier. So we would, the sooner the better.
Mr. Chair, my, my, I don't, I don't, I, you know, I'm comfortable with the, the recommendation. I, I would say that maybe somehow, if it's the will of the board, that we codify in some type of policy that says that there is no cap, so that future boards will be able to follow it and not just have it reappear. So that would be my, my suggestion, should we do this, add a policy number to it and put it in our, in our policy manual.
So, go ahead, Dr. Birdsong.
I'd, I'd like to recommend that the administration draft the policy, and then have it go to the policy review committee, and then back to the board for review, if that's the desire of the board.
Well, that would have been my original, that's why I was asking the question about if there's something special about September. If, if October is the, is okay, I think that would be the appropriate approach to this, because it just, it just came to us today.
Yeah.
Well, I thought this was brought up last week, wasn't it? Friday?
I mean, it was on the agenda.
It was on the agenda. So this is what I, we've got a motion for the adoption here on this particular item, which will give you the, the direction from the board to go ahead and proceed with what you, what you need to do there. I agree, Mr. Jordan, in respect about the sending it to the policy committee so that we can codify it. I think that we can do both. We go ahead and take care of this action now, and then send it back to the policy committee without objection, so that they can bring back a formal way of codifying it.
Yeah, my only question would, would be, what is it that the policy committee, committee would be considering?
Right.
All I was trying to say is, if we're going to adopt it tonight, then just, then the board as a whole is saying it will be our policy not to have a cap, and that's what we would assign a number to. I'm not sure I'm following, what, if we take the action, what are we asking the policy committee to do?
If, if I may, sir, I, I mean, I would suggest that the policy indicate that the retirees participate in the same, in the same insurance pool as the active employees, and that their premiums be based on those of the active employees, and stay away from the cap.
Okay. I don't want to get in the posture of making policy on the fly. So we have a motion and a recommendation from the administration regarding moving the cap, which I think is the will, I think we probably move with. Without objection, I would like to send this to the policy committee so that it can be formally drafted, considered, and brought back to the board. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and proceed on the recommendation, and Madam Clerk, can you call the roll?
Mr. Clanton?
Oh, okay.
Could I just make one adjustment to what you just stated? So we're, we're asking the administration to draft the policy to bring to?
To the policy committee, yeah.
Yeah, so I just want to be sure.
The, the normal process that we go through, yep.
Yes, right.
Madam Clerk?
Right.
Yes, Bassin?
Aye.
Hampson? Hampson?
Oh, she might be.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Rousen?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
So the, the recommendation is approved, and without objection, we're submitting this to the policy committee with the administration drafting a formal policy. Okay. All right, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Continue the Drive MPS Strategic Plan. Vote required. And so, how you doing, Dr. Boe?
Good evening. Good evening, Chairman Clanton, Vice Chair Dr. Gabriel, members of the board, and Dr. Birdsong. I'm just here to answer any questions, further questions you may have, but at the recommendation of the administrative, administration to vote on the strategic plan.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to adopt the administration's recommendation to adopt the strategic plan?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the recommendations set forth by Dr. Birdsong and her team with regards to the strategic plan.
Do I hear a second?
I second.
Since we're moving and properly seconding it, that we adopt the administration's recommendation in regards to the five-year strategic plan. I will now open floor for any discussion regarding this item. Ms. Bassin?
Mr. Clanton, I would like to speak.
Okay. Ms. Campson, you're the Ms. Campson.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Bassin. I'd like to just take a moment to strongly congratulate the superintendent and her team for all of the work they have done for over a year to get this strategic plan finished. We now have a plan to move forward with our goals, which certainly include our academics, getting all of our children working on grade level and beyond, reinforcing all the safety precautions that we're taking in our schools, and making sure that every school is in compliance, working with the mental health of everyone, working with the communities, just many, many things. And I strongly urge all of our parents, if they get a chance, and they were unable to go to the mini sessions that were made available for, for input, but not everyone can make those, but they could, now, once this gets approved, you'll be able to sit down and read it and see for yourself exactly what the goals are in Norfolk, and the strategies that the, that Dr. Birdsong and her, and her team have put into this, these plans. Done a lot of strategic plans myself over the years, and this plan is right on, on par with everything that I've ever seen. They've done a great job. It was a long, long year plus more to get this done, so congratulations. I don't really have any questions. I took time to sit down and read the whole thing before this meeting tonight, and I was very impressed. Thank you, Mr. Clanton, for letting me speak.
All right, thank you, Ms. Campson. And before I yield to Ms. Bassin, let me officially read what the recommendation is. The administration recommends that the Norfolk Public Schools Administration recommends that the City of Norfolk School Board accept the strategic plan, continuing the drive, equity, and excellence for all, as presented during the school board work session on, on September 14, 2022. This recommendation comes with the understanding that the board and the administration will continue to collaborate with the final development of SMART goals found within the strategic plan, data, monitoring tables, and SMART goals as the data are presented. Ms. Bassin, I know that you had wanted to speak. Ms. Basine, I know that you had wanted to speak.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Clanton. So first, you know, I want to acknowledge the hard work that the administration has put forward in this strategic plan. As I've shared before, my concern is, is more with the board's work around establishing board goals, which would then be the framework for the strategic plan, as well as to be aligned with the strategic plan. Just as the administration began the strategic planning work over a year ago, the board had begun the work to establish board goals over a year ago, spending considerable time, energy, resources, reviewing, holding listening sessions with various stakeholder groups, reviewing student outcome data, academic data, and spending numerous hours in time coming together as a team to establish draft goals. And so, for me, I feel like the work is incomplete, because our, the board's work is incomplete. And I think that's an integral part of the strategic plan. We have to come together, and I know we're capable of coming together to come around a collective set of beliefs about what we want to see, a collective, a set of goals, SMART goals, for what we want our students to achieve, that are intentionally focused on our students. And I think that we're not there yet. The other piece I want to see is, I mean, you know, as it says in the motion, the data monitoring tables. Right now, you know, it was, it was my expectation that those tables and the data would be provided to us so that we could collectively come around, you know, what those SMART goals would be, that we would be able to agree on what those SMART goals would be. And right now, that data is, is not in, in the plan, and we're being asked to, to approve it. So for me, I feel like I acknowledge the hard work that's gone in, but for me, the plan as of now is incomplete. And I strongly encourage this board to come together, that we, we have demonstrated that we can do, and have great discussion around, but that we come back together to establish those goals, so that we can collectively, as an administrative and board governance team, move the district forward. So at this time, I, I am not comfortable voting in support of the strategic plan.
Thank you, Ms. Basine. Anyone else? Dr. Gabriel?
Thank you, Chairman Clanton. Dr. Birdsong, Dr. Poe, staff, parents, all the stakeholders that had input on the strategic plan. This is an exciting moment for Norfolk Public Schools. This is going to allow us to set a clear direction for what the desires are, not only for our young scholars, but where we can lead our community and where we say we want to go. And Dr. Birdsong, you know, as the pediatrician in me, I clearly understood what you meant when you said you felt like you had birthed a child, when you brought this document to the board. And as we all know, once the child is here, that's when the real work starts. And so with this strategic plan, I'm, I'm hoping that we can work together to establish those joint goals, and have continued conversation about our shared goals and responsibilities, and what we want to do in order to do the heavy lifting, because now that we hopefully will pass this plan, it's going to take all of us to come together in order to really hit the targets year after year. And so with that being said, I will vote in support of this strategic plan, and I will be an active member, doing whatever I can as a board member, as a parent, as a community member, to make sure that our staff and students are supported, so that we can achieve these targets in the timeline that we hope to accomplish and achieve.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Gabriel. Mr. Jordan?
I, I too want to acknowledge the work that's been done. And, and part of my hope, and I guess part of my understanding, was that the board had established some goals, maybe not SMART goals, some SMART goals, that was helping to drive, no pun intended, drive the, the strategic planning work. I want to try to describe my concern about adopting the plan without SMART goals first. It's my, it's my goal this November to visit my daughter, who's in Dallas, Texas. And so I established that goal. I've been trying to figure out, am I going to fly? Am I going to drive? What path I'm going to take? With strategic planning to me for driving excellence for our students, the SMART goals are about the student outcomes, and they describe where you're going. And then the, you work backwards with that end in mind, in terms of what the strategies are and what the paths are going to be to get there. For me to leave here tonight and to decide I'm going to get in my truck and go down Main Street, without really having first clearly defined, the end in mind, to me, is, is, is backwards. It is not strategic. So we have data available right now to define those SMART goals, so that it is clear what the student outcomes are that we have in mind. And then I think with that, if the board wants to revisit, or the administration wants to revisit strategies, you do that with the end in mind and the goals in place. And there's no reason that we cannot have most of the tables populated today as we take this action versus populating it later. So I, I think that the work is good work. I think some of the strategies are good strategies, but unless they are driven by clear SMART goals that are student outcome-driven, I don't think that they are really measurable or successful at, at being monitored. So I, I can't support the plan in its current draft, where there are no clear specified SMART goals as agreed upon by the board, that then align with the strategy that tells us how we're going to, to get there. And, and so I, I just think that is what we were working towards. I think that's what we should be doing. And as the, this being the first strategic plan, adopt it or consider for adoption by the first elected school board, where much of the, our conversation is, the first elected school board has been around accountability. To me, you don't provide accountability if you don't have SMART outcomes and SMART goals that say where you're going and how you measure the path to get there. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Dr. Martin?
Thank you, Chair Clanton. I really never got a clear answer to my question earlier on, on why, what is, what's the difference between now, what's going to happen between now and October 5th? Why can't we get the data, you know, send, send a clear message that, yes, we are, we are on board with this strategic plan, and just wait until we get the data on October 5th to vote on it? What's going to change between now and then?
Is that a question you're directing at me?
Yeah, or Dr. Birdsong can answer.
Well, I think that I responded that our governance trainer felt that it was important that we approve the strategic plan, as it will tie and relate to everything else that we're doing.
But we can, we can approve it in giving consent without the vote, is what I'm saying, because I think this is an opportunity to show unity for our district. And, and I, I'm just trying to understand why we wouldn't take this opportunity, because we all are very, are, well, I won't say, we are all very satisfied with this, you know, I'm, I'm trying to be gentle here, very satisfied with the work that's been, that's been done here, and very, really excited about it, actually. And so I just don't want to push this along, when this is, this would be a missed opportunity of unity. In the end, we're going to have this wonderful plan, and we're going to monitor it, and the team NPS is going to implement it, and it's going to be, we're going to celebrate all the wins from here on out. So I want to begin with a win, is what I'm saying. And I think, and so I just, you know, I don't, I'm just still not convinced that we can't just say, yes, thank you, great job, fill the, fill in the data points, and then we'll vote on it.
Okay. Dr. Birdsong, did you have anything?
So the, the only thing I would, would add is, is that, yes, we've been working on this for a very long time. It was one of the major initiatives that this board asked me to move forward with when I became the acting superintendent three years ago. And so as we have contracted, a contractor to work with us to do, to do this strategic plan, to develop it, to engage the community, we're at a point now where we still firmly believe that you can vote and move forward. That is showing unity. We won't have all the data in October, and we've said that time and time again. I know tomorrow, we are expecting the release of our accreditation data. Yeah, that may be different than past rates, but a major part of our plan is focused on accreditation. And so I, I, I think, well, I strongly believe that at this point, we need to move forward with some action. We've been talking about this plan for a very, very long time. We are all prepared. I, I think we can be unified in it. I think the biggest concern is trust. It, it's the lack of trust that, for whatever reason, that the goals won't be developed, but they have to be. I mean, that is the plan. We provide it to you a monitoring calendar with very specific dates of when you will receive the data. And so that won't be a surprise to you, because you have that information. So as the, the data come in, as they're finalized, we, we will be able to, with the board, in collaboration with the board, as expressed by our strategic planner, to move forward with the complete development of the goals. The stems of the goals are there. Some of the data points are missing. And again, I, I believe it would be a missed opportunity for us to kick this down the road until, until another work session or board meeting.
I appreciate that information, and, you know, because when we were talking about this earlier, we were under the assumption that all the data would be available in October, but you're saying not all the data will be available.
We were very clear with that, from the, we were very clear from the beginning that some of the data would not be available, because some of the data, for example, with the CCRI data, the state doesn't even have that data. We will be collecting that baseline data this year, and that's a part of our strategic plan. We were very clear. The administration was very clear when the data would be available.
I'm just talking about the conversation we had today. It wasn't, it was missing from it. That's all. Y'all had a conversation.
Dr. Rousen?
Yeah, we did. Oh.
Yes, and I, I'd like to commend the superintendent, the administration, for this plan also, and that's what I'm pushing, and in favor of the plan, because I think the, the data is going to move, whether we had it tonight, or when, I mean, the goals and the data, and where we want it to go, and monitoring it, as a governing board, we'll be very much involved in that. And it is important to have a plan in place, and of course, a strategic plan is very flexible and changeable. I've been on stra- strategic plan teams many times, and even when they're adopted, they, they are changeable, and they, and they move and shift. They're very living document. And so I think it's important for us to have a plan that's adopted, and to sort of go from there, in putting in the data, looking at the data, looking at our points, you know, where we want to go, do we want to shift, do we want to move? The governing board looking at, you know, are they aligned with other things? So I think it's important to adopt the plan, because I think the plan itself, the format and the plan, and the work that's been put into it, is very strong and real, and, and I think ready to move forward. The only thing that we have to do as a board is to decide, once we plug the numbers in, decide what direction and what the, you know, the target points will be, and what the goals will be, and our expectations, and, and other things that we have to do. But I think it's important to move on with this document as it is. And I feel very comfortable with this document as it is, knowing the work that we have to do.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Rousen. I'll, I'll give my, my, my final comments on this. I've listened very diligently to all of my colleagues, and I try to be as fair as possible in considerations in what we bring forth. But I, I want to start by saying thank you, as I've said, to the administration for working on this document, I mean, pulling these things together. We talk about goals, and I, and I know that it's kind of, for those who may not be following, we've had governance training, and there was a different trainer that we had that talked about separate board goals. And anybody who does, and Ms. Campson and myself have talked about this, about strategic planning, you know, you've got goals that are in the plan, and then you have tactics and so, objectives and so forth that follow that. But the board goals are really meant to be shared goals to, for what we use to evaluate the superintendent. And that's what we're still working on. We are coming into this seat in July. I've been working diligently to try to get us onto that particular point and get us in alignment. This is a critical piece to that. And when I hear about SMART goals, there are 28 pages of SMART goals that I see in here. May not have all the data, but you have formulated what that goal would be. And in many cases, they've come from the accountability plan. Now, speaking about the accountability plan, there's a word that you use, Dr. Birdsong, that I have to rely on in respect to our governance training. We, we're here, and for those who may have been watching, one of the chapters we talked about was trust. And one of the things that we have to do is to give trust our superintendent. We have to trust the administration and the team that they put together, because in many cases, board members will ask for additional information, ask for things, and, and go down rabbit holes because of a lack of trust. So I like to remind my board members and my colleagues that not everybody voted for the original accountability plan, but we used the will of the board, and we moved forward. And today, some use that same plan that didn't vote for it, but it's the will of the board. We utilize that, and I know that you all have used that to, as a manager framework for how we move forward. So with that, I ask that we place and give some trust to our superintendent, to provide some trust to the administration, that this is a living document, and that we can move forward and do, as I've said, we can chew gum and, and walk at the same time and get these things together, that we are moving in a direction, and that the community will see that. So regardless of where individuals vote, it should be the will of the board, whatever the board decides on that, that we collectively, as a part of our governance training, come together to do what's in the best interest. And the overarching goal is to ensure that each student in Norfolk Public Schools, each student in Norfolk Public Schools, leaves our school division prepared for life and career. And that's the ultimate thing, I think, that we're all in support of. So Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Basine?
At this time, I vote no.
Campson?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yay.
Jordan?
I'm going to vote no.
Martin?
Aye.
Rousen?
Aye.
Clanton?
Whoa.
Aye.
That's a big aye.
The Continue the Drive NPS Strategic Plan is approved. And I'm going to give you a clap.
Yay.
We also learned that in governance training, that we need to celebrate wins and move forward.
Yeah, that's what I'm not even trying to.
Okay. Use of Facilities Report, that was pulled out, so, so we can frame that. Do her a motion to adopt the Use of Facilities Report.
Clanton?
Yes, I'm sorry, Ms. Campson.
The people now use that at all these different occasions, the creators of it, and they all voted against it. The like we had. If we could vote people out.
Ms. Campson, did you want to speak publicly, because you're on speaker? And I'm sitting right beside your, your little intercom. Did you have a comment, Ms. Campson, that you wanted to share? I know that she can hear me.
No, it's nothing. All right. So the Use of Facilities Report, do her a motion to adopt- adopt the Use of Facilities Report?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the Facilities Report.
Okay, do I have a second?
I second.
All right. It's been moved and properly seconded that we adopt the Use of Facilities Report. Discussion, I know that this item was pulled from the consent agenda, and so I'm going to yield to Ms. Bassin to speak to the item.
Thank you. So I asked to have this pulled because I was trying to understand the last two, I wanted to understand the last two items that are related to the summer leap program at J Cox, and I believe, and I'm sorry, my computer is being slow, if, Ms. Tanner, if you could pull it up, but related to the summer programs and the costs associated with it. I was just curious why our summer school programs are included in the community use forms?
I'd be happy to speak to that. These are, most of the summer school costs are not included here. The use of the school buses for summer programs are not here. There were two special programs, one at Monroe and one at J Cox, which are funded with external grants. They used buses. Some were for field trips, and I think others for off hours. So this was the use of the buses outside of the normal summer school program.
I see. Okay, so they were grant-funded?
Yes, ma'am.
Programs outside of what we did with our, rest of our summer school. Okay, I just, it wasn't clear there. And I think just next time, if there's a situation like that, just maybe a note so that it's clear to us why those, you know, costs are associated.
So I'll ask the question again. Was this posted on Friday?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Clanton, respectfully, I did share my question. And so I don't understand why when it's posted is continually brought up. Because I did raise this prior to this meeting, asking that this be withdrawn so that I could ask that question, correct?
You did. But our protocol and norms state that by 12:30 on Monday, any questions that we have, we can email those, not just to pull them out. But this, to be perfectly honest, that could have been an email to the, in my opinion, to the finance, the chief of finance director, and easily answered.
Our protocols don't allow me to directly email.
But you can definitely send that to the superintendent to get that clarification.
I can, but.
I just, I just, when we're pulling things from consent, when we're pulling things from out of the consent agenda, when we could have utilized and emailed time, and I've said it before, that there's the work that happens before the meeting, after the meeting, to the superintendent. I think that that could have been done. That's all that was. That's the chair.
Thank you.
Just, and I think this is something that, one of the reasons I had asked for one of the policies to be pulled, that I hope we can get, talk about this more at a work session. Because that is the second or third time, at least the second time tonight, you've asked about Friday.
Yeah, things being posted on time.
And have raised it before. The reason that the board adopted norm around the Friday piece was to try to give the administration the courtesy of a heads up.
But, Mr. Jordan, you're acting like I wasn't sitting here when we adopted the norm.
We adopted this before you were on the board.
And we kept it as a norm.
I did that interrupt.
Okay, go ahead.
You raised it, and I just want to speak to it for a moment. So what ultimately I hope we get to is that we know ahead of time what's coming. The, it's not, you know, as you know, this is the board's meeting. And for the board to receive something on Friday, you know, the board still does its work in public. To then say that the board member is supposed to review everything, understand everything, submit all the questions, get it back from the administrator, I mean, that's not what the intent was. It really was a courtesy to say, hey, these are some questions that I'm going to ask in the meeting, so when you come to the podium, you can speak to it. And so there's not some inherent rule or burden on the board member to do what I think you are interpreting the Friday posting piece. So I just think we need to talk about that more, and what the expectations are, and what our policies say, and all these things. But I do think it's a bit unfair that each time that there's a question like this, then you will say, was this posted on Friday, with no real follow-up, and then let it be out there as though there's something wrong by a board member being in a meeting of the board to ask a question for the benefit of the discussion of the board as a whole, so the board can then decide how it's going to act. So, thank you.
Okay. Note, Mr. Jordan, and as regarding the policy earlier that we removed, there will be continuation in our conversation with our governance trainer regarding the timing for which we get these items out. So we'll be following that up. Madam Clerk, you can go ahead and call the roll.
Bassin?
Aye.
Campson? Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Rousen?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye. Item 6.05, approval of minutes for the August 3, 2022 meeting. Do I have a motion to adopt the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the minutes for the meeting of August 3, 2022.
Great. Thank you. Do I have a second?
I second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we approve the minutes from the August 3 meeting. Is there any discussion?
Yes. As I shared in my email to you, I am asking that our minutes be modified to reflect for item 3.03, that board discussion was not allowed due to time constraints. I think it's important because that was the only item where the board was not able to discuss the topic. So I believe that should be noted in the minutes.
And, Mr. Chair, if that's in the form of a motion to amend, I will second.
Yes.
All right. It's been moved and seconded that we amend the minutes to include that discussion was not had on, which item is that again? That was the?
3.03.
3.03. So the amendment's there, discussion on that one. I won't be voting in favor of this particular amendment, because if that's the case, then it also needs to be added, that I stated as the chair, the reason why we weren't doing that. We were an hour and a half behind. And I also stated to my colleagues, if you needed additional follow-up, to please reach out to the administration. This particular item did not take up, didn't warrant the additional discussion at that particular time, and felt that we continue to move on because we didn't need to vote on anything. So, again, minutes are recordings of action of the board. And because there was not a vote on this particular action, I do not feel that it's warranted for the minutes and that it's an appropriate item. So I will be voting no. But, Madam Clerk, is there any additional discussion? Madam Clerk, you can go ahead and call the roll. And this motion is in regards to the amendment presented by Ms. Bassin and seconded by Mr. Jordan.
Bassin?
Aye.
Campson?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Nay.
Jordan?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Rousen?
Nay.
Clanton?
Nay. The original motion stands at this particular point. And so, Madam Clerk, if you will call the roll on the adoption of the minutes from the August 3, 2022 meeting.
Bassin?
Aye.
Campson?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Nay.
Martin?
Aye.
Rousen?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye. It stand approved?
I'm sorry. Did you just include these minutes as, can you repeat? I missed the, what we just voted on.
We just voted on the August 3 minute. You had an amendment to the main motion, and so the amendment that you proposed died. So then we went back to the original motion which is to approve.
Right. So that was my error. Mine should have been a nay.
Should have been a nay? All right. I will change that. Madam Clerk, will you reflect that Ms. Bassin is a nay? All right. The August 3 minutes still stand approved. Okay, so with that, we are just about adjourned. But I want to, I've got too much paper up here. So a couple meetings back over the summer, the board did an amendment to their executive closed session to go into that session. And in that amendment, it talked and listed two particular staff members. As you know, the board is responsible directly for the hiring and the evaluation of the superintendent, but the board has the authority to discuss and to talk about personnel or talk about anything with any staff member. When we came out of that particular meeting, before I cast my vote to approve the executive closed session, I stated publicly that, and I'll just put it out here, that one of the items that we went in there was regarding Mr. Billups as the chief of human resources. But I stated before I made my motion and apologized to Mr. Billups, and I'll do that here again today, that it had nothing to do with his performance at all. And so if there is anything that individuals or the community or anybody takes away from that, Mr. Billups, as the chair, I apologize to you in that respect, that that wasn't the case. And we, you know, we definitely talked about your work and what you've been able to do for us. But I do want to note that you have been commended on something, and this has been shared with me as the chair. And I want those to know that Mr. Billups has been serving with the Virginia Department of Education, the superintendent's investigative panel hearing since 2017, representing the city of Norfolk. And he has been recommended by the state superintendent, Gilliam Barlow, to serve as the chair. And so I wanted to publicly recognize that. And thank you for representing Norfolk Public Schools and your professionalism. And so, congratulations, serve and serve well. We appreciate you. And so with that.
Mr. Chair, just for, where are we on the agenda?
We're about to adjourn the business meeting and go into, and go into citizens' comment. Non-agenda comment.
We're going to adjourn?
The business portion. We know more business at this point, and we're moving into citizen comment, non-agenda item, citizen comment. All right. So with that, the meeting stands adjourned for the business meeting. And we're now, I'm going to move into non-agenda citizen comment.